Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Rule call, everybody but Heidi and Cheryl, but I am assuming, we have not heard that they're going to have a meeting today.
Heidi may not be able to make it today.
Okay.
Cheryl should be here.
Okay, Cheryl will be here. All right. Okay. Any additions to the agenda? It looks like we have one hundred personnel, number three and four.
How many can motion for me to adopt an addition?
I'll second that.
So we've got a motion by Bruce and a second by Kala. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And carry. Approve and credit a minute from the February ninth, two thousand and sixteen, for the reports.
How many can motion for me to approve the minutes?
A second.
Got a motion by Bruce and a second by Cheryl. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And carry. Financial reports. Looks like we have the January two thousand and sixteen Treasury reports in your packet that was sent out. Anything on the Treasury?
I think the only thing was that they did take a debt service payment on this year, or this payment, which is, I have these payments, but that would probably be the only thing that I saw that's really unusual, unless Cheryl, you saw something.
No.
Okay, if I don't hear anything, I would like to watch it to approve. Got a motion by Lou.
Second.
Second by Randy. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And carry. Audit and approval of the bills. Looks like we have additional January bills of two thousand and sixteen and February bills of two thousand and sixteen. Cheryl, I'm assuming you were at school earlier this week?
Yes, a little today to go in and out of the bills and everything looked like it was pretty much normal business. Still having improvements in expenditures for that, but it all has all been approved. One thing I did notice was we had a purchase of a baseball pitching machine, a softball pitching machine, and balls for the softball pitching machine, which came to ninety-eight hundred dollars. Wonderful additions for our new stadium, because everything used it, I believe. But there was also a donation from the Booster Club for ten thousand dollars for that purpose, so it didn't cost the district anything, but I just wanted to make note of that. Otherwise, everything was as normal and I would make the motion that we approved.
Okay, so we have a motion by Cheryl. Second by Lou. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And carry. Consent agenda. Looks like we have two consent agenda items. One is review and consider approval of the following athletic assignments for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year. Looks like we have the baseball and softball. Head baseball coach, Brad Schoolman, assistant baseball coach, Ron Fuchs, ninth grade, John Kiefer, eighth grade, Chad Campbell, and seventh grade, Ben Moser. For girls, high school varsity softball, Tim Whaler, assistant softball, Mary Linecker, and eighth grade, Tracy, Tracy, I'm sorry, Tracy Heepenberg, Mr. Head, track coach, Christine Waifel, assistant track coach would be Jeff Swawczki, assistant track coach, Riley Decker, and then head golf coach is Jesse Rasmussen, and assistant is Jay Thompson. And then the other one, review and consider approval of accepting seventy-dollar donation to the elementary school from Tim and Michelle Roberg family.
We certainly want to thank them for their great donation to the elementary school. And the word should also be where they were probably still looking for some great softball girls coach and, I think, track coach, if I'm not mistaken, right next. So just be aware of that, we'll come back when those positions are good.
How many can motion for me to approve the consent agenda? That's red.
We've got a motion from Bruce.
A second.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussion?
I believe these coaches are all the same that we had last season.
All of them that are on the.
Yes, that's what I thought. Looks like a good program.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And carry. Okay, personnel. Review and consider approval of the resignation of Sue Kern.
Oh, she wants to.
Oh, I'm sorry, business, I'm sorry. Business. And I remember to people in the audience, if there's anything on the business that you guys want to talk about, please raise your hand, someone else will call on you, okay? So review and consider approval of sponsoring participation in the Minnesota State High School Clay Target League for the spring two thousand and sixteen. And Matt, I think, gave us some information in our packet here. Basically outlining some of the events and stuff like that, so go ahead.
Yeah, so, I mean, just to recap briefly, and I won't spend too much time on this because you can read through all the details, but we did, this did come through the Athletic Committee back in April twenty-ninth of two thousand and fifteen, and it was approved to recommend to bring to the school board. At that time, with no financial commitment to the school district, I just do want to make a note that if you approve this, I'm going to use some money from my budget, nothing new, to pay to send a coach to do some training, and I'll discuss that in just a little bit, just so you're aware. Minnesota Youth Shotgun Association, and we would want to make sure that we're providing that for our program. It's not new to the budget, it's half a million dollars that I have that I'd want to do that. No conflict with other current activities in the spring, and you'll see the schedule, the way that it sets up. Of the six of the eight Central Minnesota Conference schools offer it this spring, will offer it this spring, not including us, so we would make seven of eight neighboring districts that have it are listed there. And that's just some of them. That'd be for boys and girls. So the logistics of the league, and you can go to MNClayTarget.com and read all about this and all of the information if you wanted, but basically, March first, we'd have to register for our team, so we'd have to make that decision at this board meeting tonight if we're going to have it. All of the practices and competition rounds are all held in Painesville, so there's no transportation. If we're competing against Benson, let's say Benson would shoot on a range on her own, we would shoot on a range here in Painesville, and then we would enter in our scores into the website, and that's how you compete. Okay, so the practices and competitions all take place on the same day, that would practice round and then the competition on Saturdays, so there's no reason that kids would be bringing guns to school or anything like that, there's no, nothing. And then the ammo and the targets would all be purchased at the range, so again, they're not transporting with ammunition and guns and stuff. They have to have a firearm safety certificate in order to be on the team, as well as the student's obligations, as you can see, to provide the gun shell vest, eye protection in here and protection. We're going to have the opportunity to partner and use some of the equipment that New London has, they use the range out there, and their leader is more than willing to allow us to use like some of their shell vests and things like that, so we don't have to buy them. You can see the schedule, it's on Saturdays, starting April third all the way through June twenty-fifth. Just to be aware, because I put together all this information, there's many people that are helpful along the way. Joel Pats, who's the coach for St. Cloud Cathedral, he's also the president of Sterns Chapter of Pheasants Forever, is helping us get going. He has committed that he would be there on the first day when we run the program to help his help recording it started, and numerous other schools he's big into this. Troy Everly does the New London stuff over at their club, too. On the backside, you can see some of the finances and things and how the program works. So we would have a student pay a seventy-five-dollar usage fee, which is the same as any other activity at the high school. By the way, this would be for ninth through twelfth grade. The high school then would pay the registration fee to the Minnesota Clay Target League, which is thirty dollars, and then the remaining money, you'd send us a check to offset the costs of the shells and the targets. The cost for a student is eleven dollars a round, or twenty-two dollars a day, if they do a practice and a competition. And then the Sterns County Pheasants Forever, that Joel Pats, they've offered to partner with us for our students to sell raffle tickets, and a hundred percent of the proceeds from those raffle tickets would go right back into the program, right, to the range to offset those costs. So the cost could certainly be nothing for the students if they did some work, and otherwise that, the cost would be about two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars average across the state without any type of fundraising. You can see that, so basically, we would have about forty-five dollars left to kick in, so the exact cost is going to be determined by how much work the students do on some of that fundraising efforts. New London Spicer, they have a hundred and twenty-five-dollar activity fee, but their students actually don't pay anything. They pay the activity fee to the school, and London pays their coach, a junior high coaching salary, but they've got donations from Pheasants Forever and things like that, so basically for our school, it'll cost a little bit of administrative time, and that's about it. Is there any questions? I have a sample set of rules. You can go on the website to understand how it works, but it's a, it's a activity that uses guns, but it's a safe activity. It is really, and again, there's no guns at school, there's no ammunition at school, so our policy as far as that goes is still zero tolerance and not allowed here.
We recommend approval.
How many can motion?
I'll second it.
We've got a motion by Bruce and a second by Cheryl. Ready for the audience, have any things to say about it? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And carry.
So then we'll have a meeting in school beginning as early as Thursday to get the word out, so that students know about that it's coming, but as far as their ability to sign up, since we out-register the team and their registration deadline individually is March fifteenth, so.
Okay, review and consider approval of the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen school calendar. Looks like we have that in our packet.
I put a colored copy and a bold quote on the screen, to get a close-up of that. There was quite a bit of discussion on this. There are going to be parts that some people, like some parts that some people would rather have changed. Just to make sure, one of the things that the teacher really suggested is that we go Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesdays to start the year. So the twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and the thirty-first will be the first days, and then the thirty-first will be the registration, or the tenth will be registration, thirty-first will be open also. And now you have some time to look at it, so I'm just going to kind of go through it fairly quickly, just stop me if you need me. We moved the staff development day up to the third of October, that's new, but we wanted to get a staff development day in early. I kind of sacrificed a snow day for that, but I think for what we're going to do, and we're going to try to get some schools together and do a combination of things with various schools for that staff development day. I think the end of the quarter is forty-one days. The reason we did it that way is it became difficult. We had moved the end of the quarter to the seventh, then you have the, or the end of the quarter to the seventh, then you move the teachers' day to the eighth, and so you got, you know, kids coming back, and take a day out and they're coming back, so we just shortened up the quarter, and I think the teachers were fine with that. We would have liked to have moved the parent-teacher conferences up a week, but then we run into Veterans Day. So that's where we left them, where they're at. Lot of discussion about the twenty-third. We left it as a school day mainly because if you go to January, the second has to be a day of non-student content. So I think if I would have had school on the second, I probably would have not had school on the twenty-third. And then we've got the end of the quarter, the quarter break, so the second quarter is forty-four days, a little bit longer than what it usually has been, but it just didn't work out well in other ways. If we would have changed it, had a lot of discussion, parent-teacher conferences, they would have liked to have that moved up. Our problem is that we also have to get some things done, or move back, I think, but we also have to get some things done for registration and things, so we left it there, where we had it. And again, these are, part of these on the third is, staff development day is half the day, parent-teacher conferences half the day, and then in the evening for this, parent-teacher conferences. Staff development's no day on March third. End of the quarter is on the twenty-fourth, forty-two days. The workday is on the twenty-seventh. No school for spring break, but just note that the seventeenth is a snow makeup day, if we need it. And we would end school on the thirty-first, work, teachers' workday would be on the first. A lot of discussion and things, you've got a survey that was taking place, because the problem became is that you either needed to have, if it was going to be on Sunday, on Memorial Weekend, Sunday, we also asked them on Friday, or you could move it back a week in order to get everything done. At the end, and I think Laura, if you want to address that a little bit about why we came up with the twentieth.
Looking at, we did send out a survey, there are some things that we have to finish up with seniors as far as credit checks and transcripts and those kinds of things, so looking at when the seniors would be out and their grades would be final, and we did come up with those days on the survey. I sent out to all of this year's junior parents via email, and the number of parents that responded was about half the class, a little more than half the class is the number of parents that responded to the survey, and I asked them to rank the dates. Which one would they like their first choice, second choice, third choice? And in the end, it ends up being Sunday, May twenty-eighth, that had the most favorable rating as far as overall, although by just the one date, Friday, the twenty-sixth, though, with talking with Matt, the last three years, he went back and checked the activity schedule. We would have had a softball tournament on that day, and last year, we would have had a baseball as far as part of the section playoffs, so that does make it difficult to do. There have been some things the section has done to accommodate them, but it's probably easier not to have to deal with that on a last-minute agenda. So Sunday has always been the thing our district has done, is have graduation on Sunday. I think Sunday, the twenty-eighth, is the best, and it doesn't look from the survey to be something parents would absolutely not like. So putting it off till Sunday, the fourth, you've already had seniors out of school for about a week and a half and all of those things. I believe it would be hard to get the band back, choir back, and some of those things.
I think it was the least favorite option.
It was the least favorite option on here. And one concern I had originally with Sunday, the twenty-eighth, was having our full band because it was a holiday weekend, but our band does volunteer to play for the memorial service, which is Monday. So I don't know that that's really a concern, because most of them will be staying in town anyway, because they volunteered for being part of that memorial program. So I do believe Sunday, May twenty-eighth, is our best option, the way the calendar falls.
And do be aware, when you approve this, you're just approving the date. I do have a parent who's really interested in helping me make it visually better for parents and stuff to look at, so just be aware of that. The dates will be the same, but it may change in format somewhat, so just be aware, if you'd like to make it look as good as we can for parents.
How many can motion we approved the calendar?
So we've got a motion by Lou.
A second.
Second by Kala. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And carry. Okay, so that is for business. Now we can go on to personnel. First one is review and consider approval of the resignation of Sue Kern, parent educator, effective February twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen.
Resignation.
So moved.
Got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any other discussions? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And carry. Number two, review and consider approval of hiring Joshua Barston, school nurse, effective March first, two thousand and sixteen.
This person still has some certifications, just like the last nurse that we had, and they will be working towards that, that certification. Anything else? Dave is not here yet, he's rep. So it's kind of the same situation that we had for the last one, there's some certifications finished, that person will be working towards it. Certainly recommend approval.
Were there a lot of?
I think we had two people that we interviewed.
So we've got a motion by Kala.
Second.
Second by Cheryl. Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And carry. Number three, under personnel and additions to the agendas, review and consider approval of the following targeted service assignments for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. Targeted service math, Kim Jones, sixteen hours, and Janet Kemper, sixteen hours, and then for the targeted service reading, we have Lea Garth Groffy, eleven hours, and Diana Schultz, eleven hours.
These are cost neutral, until we've done this last number of years.
So moved.
Got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And carry. Review and consider approval to hire Christie Shoemaker, special ed, paraprofessional, for seventeen hours per week, effective February twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen.
This is a special ed need, we need to.
Got a motion from Lou.
Second.
And a second from Kala. Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Informational reports. We're going to start off with secondary principal, Lori Flora.
Some of you may know, we did have our district spelling bee last night, and it was a wonderful bee, it was one of the longest we've had, it went twenty-one rounds. Our sixth grade classroom winner was Macy Carlson, our seventh grade winner was Delaney Ignace, and our eighth grade winner and district champion was Kirsten Campbell. So it was a great round. We also had awards for coys, which is Maggie Mulling, and our sportsmanship award for the bee went to Amanda Meyer. So it was a wonderful one. Our mid-winner activity day is tomorrow, so we will have students going to, that have been doing well in the classroom, will be going to the water park in Arrowood, skiing and snowboarding at Power Ridge, bowling in a movie here in town, skating in a movie here in town, and some students that have outstanding work will be getting some help and support in the classroom here in the building. So that will be going on tomorrow. This is something that our district is part of, just some more information, it's our technology summit that will take place for our whole staff August fourth, so any staff member that is going to want to attend, their admission to this conference will be free, and the speakers are on here, and if you're interested in seeing the message from any of those speakers, there's blurbs out on YouTube, so you can certainly just key them in and you'll see a little bit on there. The idea behind the conference is what we're all striving for is using technology to transform learning, and it looks like it would be a great conference, and Jesse Rasmussen, who is currently on our staff, will be doing one of the breakout sessions along with representatives from other districts, so I'm really excited about that. And one last note was, we had a training, and some of you may be aware of this, but a group, the ACT group or dementia-friendly group, there was a grant for Painesville. They did come out and speak to our whole middle school, high school staff, and opening service. Then we had nine teachers that engaged in the more advanced training to become actively part of that program, so they had that training last week, so I was really excited, because with dementia increasing and extended family staying connected longer, especially in our rural areas, we do have students that become very familiar with having grandparents and people within their family, they're interacting with daily, struggling with that. So I think that was a very good backbone for our teachers to be able to work with students in that framework. So, any other questions that you might have? Okay, thank you very much.
Let's move down to number three, the activities director, Max Monhardt.
Well, we finished the evening activities for the winter time, so I hope you got your chance to have some popcorn. Been kind of busy working on trying to get logistics stuff together for that trap shooting league, ending the winter season, the gymnastics dance, the boys and girls hockey have completed already, wrestling state tournaments this coming weekend, we have one individual qualify, and then the boys' basketball will start their playoffs Thursday, and girls' basketball seeding on Wednesday to find out, and they'll find out depending on where they're seeded when they'll play. Just an update, we have eighteen kids in speech this year, up from six last year, so we're excited about the increase in numbers there. I went home the other day and it was light out, so we're getting ready for spring, right? So all the daylight's getting a little bit longer, track and softball start March fourteenth, baseball and golf, March twenty-first. And you know, we, one of these days, I suppose I should count exactly how many activities we have in the winter through the course, but there's a lot of different people that help to make those events possible, whether it's the announcers, score, books, clocks, officials, all that kind of stuff, and we appreciate all of them, and if you're at games and you see them, it'd be great if you could tell them thank you, too, because without those people, we can't run those events, so. Does anybody have any questions for me? Thank you.
Number four, technology. Well, we met on Monday morning and discussed the hiring of the technology personnel, doing some work on that, trying to figure out what we can do for the individual that we are interested in, get hiring. We talked about that, we talked about the E-rate on the logistics of being able to connect to two buildings, we had a long conversation we had. Right now, it does not qualify for that, so we're trying to figure out how we can do that with, without impacting the district too much. So they're going back to the drawing board a little bit to figure out, you know, is it something that we really need to press on? Do we start saving money for it, or will eventually we be able to pay for some of it through this E-rate? So that was one thing that we talked about. I forgot my notes, so I can't think of too many other things.
We talked about that, we've had some difficulty with E-rate, in fact, I mean, with TechCheck who's helped us with E-rate, some issues, it's just interesting to work with the federal government to get our portion of the money back that we have. I think with the run between the buildings, we just need to look at it and start planning one way or another. It'd be nice to get the technology person on board to help with the planning and that kind of stuff, so we're excited and hope we can bring good news to the board in the future with that. They're updating our wireless, looking at that. Even if we don't do the run between the buildings, I think the E-rate's still waitable because we can use those dollars, the seventy, seventy-thirty split, to increase all of our wireless, there's a lot of things we can use it. So we're going to go back, we lost about eighty-three thousand that they didn't give us, we're going to go back, and as much as I shudder a little bit, we're going to resubmit for that, because it's just a fun process. But I think we're hopeful that we'll get it again and we'll jump through the hoops. I've never seen so many hoops in my whole life, I can tell you that. But we're going to jump through them, and, because it's nice money for us to be able to improve our infrastructure without costing us a whole lot. So I think those were the main things that we had talked about, and we're going to set up another meeting in the near future to continue our discussion.
And one of the, some of the other things, too, I just was, as you were making remarks about those, E-rates and stuff, one of the things is, too, with some of the policies and stuff like that, we're going to wait until we get the individual on board so that we can get some more ideas. I did go to one of the conferences that I think is one of the outbreak sessions, were regarding different, whether it's Twitter or other services or other programs that are out there for people to use and stuff like that. We need to, you know, media, we need a media.
Social media.
Media policy and a lot of stuff out there, so I think we need to, we need to get on board with it, and, but I think we're waiting, like I said, we're waiting for that guy to get here, for that person. like I said, we're waiting for that guy to get here and, or that person in here.
And we'll move order as, as quick as we can. I'm sure that we'll have some discussion about that at the workshop when we're ready.
Um, administrative negotiation, please.
Um, we are still working on it, we've got tonight and, um, probably in the next few minutes, we should be able to roll out most everything.
Okay then. Thanks Bruce. Um, let's jump back, back to number two since we have Dave Orland back here from his coaching or rep-ing review. We never know how long a middle school game is gonna go. Okay, well, uh, first of all, uh, I got word today that we were awarded a one and a half reading corps tutors for a game next year, so I think that is our fourth year that we've gotten that. And we were also awarded a part-time math corps, which will be our third year. So we're excited about that. It's been, it's been really a neat experience for us, being able to offer the interventions and then also those tutors do their volunteer time in the school. So it's like, it's like getting two people when they're in there, so we really appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to just talk a little bit about is the Blanded Community Event that I was, the conference that I was at a few weeks ago. And I, I haven't had a real good chance to spend a lot of time with my staff and talking about some of the things that we, that we went through. But I will say that it was really a transforming experience and it was, it was excellent. And I thought that, I, I really didn't know what it was gonna be like when it, when it started. And by the time it ended, you, you know, you build relationships with, with 23 other people in the community. And we weren't there to solve the world's problems. We were there to learn how to be community leaders, learn how to, how to get people engaged. And we continue to do that. We, we have small groups set aside. I, I have a meeting tomorrow night with, with two of the members. And then we go to St. Cloud on March 8th and then there'll be two more large group sessions and we hope to continue to go with that. So it was really a neat experience and I appreciate Mr. Hewitt giving me the opportunity to go. It's really about I to have at this time, any questions?
So when you start talking about the, the Blanded Project and you were gonna meet with your staff, can you include the high school staff somewhere along the way here?
Sure.
Because it's a community thing, it wasn't just for the elementary school.
Yep.
And there are lots of, you know, some of your days, but as you have stuff that you wanna pass on, maybe everybody can get in on it.
Definitely.
Well, and certainly as we talk about, remember, you know, get a little bit, when I talk a little bit about strategic plan, remember I talked about now where the rubber hits the road? When the administrative team gets together and says, okay, once we set those goals, how do we reach them? You know, part of those goals deal with community. So that, you know, bringing back ideas with that might be something that we naturally bring back.
Yep, that'd be excellent.
I would say, actually I had, um, a gentleman who works for the hospital who isn't from here, who he wants to have lunch with me and come and tour the elementary school. And I have, there's a former student that I kind of connected with who wants to come back and visit. And it's just trying to get people reconnected into the, with the school district and the community. So it's, it's really a cool.
It's excellent.
Thanks for lying. Okay, administrative report, Robert Hewitt.
Um, just to bring up the strategic plan just a little bit, article went to paper asking for input. Um, not much at this time, did get a little bit. I did get some input back from the staff and even from our committee members. Uh, once I get that, I've kind of set, I think Friday up is the deadline for that. Once I get it, I'll have to take a look at that information, correlate it somewhat. I'll work with MSBA, probably our committee itself come up with a format on how, and depending on what those recommendations are, how we might incorporate them or may not incorporate them depending, but we'll have the input. But until I get all of that, I'll just have to figure out a way and at least make a recommendation to the board on how we would come back with the board when we're ready to do it. It'll probably move things back maybe to the second meeting in March where, um, it'll come back to the board after we get a chance to digest a little bit the comments, any comments that were made. All right. QCOM, just be aware that we submitted our plan to MBE. We're just waiting on, they are supposed to get back to us by the 16th. I think that our next in-service, we're planning on having some teachers present to the teachers what the QCOM plan would look to give them more of a heads up so that they know what's coming back towards them if MBE were to accept our plan. Um, so I think it's moving in the right direction right now. I think if we can get this done, it's a really good deal for, for everybody. Uh, so we're excited, we've also submitted that application. So that's it, now we just have to wait for it. Remember, this isn't gonna go on our roofs. Um, both down in our agreement that roof's not the best place to put things that you have to take off eventually or have to replace the roof. Um, so we're gonna look at doing it in a closed-in area, I talked with Max a little bit and Lori. Um, we're, we're already have a chain fence and fence and put it in that area. And I think it'd be a great, it could save us some money and also be a great learning opportunity for us to do it. So we're, now we're just waiting, that's a lottery type of thing, so we just have to wait for it. Just a reminder to parents, no school March 11th, that's a staff development day. Also a reminder to parents that this no, next snow makeup day, hopefully we won't have to use it, but that's March 28th, um, the day after the spring break, the Monday after the spring break. And hopefully we won't have to, um, knock on wood here. Uh, we continue to work on the budgets, um, we're soon gonna be in March. I mean, it's flying by fast, have not forgotten the workshop that we wanna have. I'd kind of like to wait and see how this technology person shakes out a little bit because it might be very nice to not only talk about what happened at the MSBA leadership conference, but also maybe have him come in and sort of talk about his vision on what he sees for technology and, and have that discussion then. So I think I may wait a little bit before I set that up, so just be aware. Don't throw away the materials to the leadership conference. That's what I have.
We got a board sharing, just a quick one on the strategic plan. I had a couple of comments and they were all positive that your article was accurate. I had a couple of comments on that one. And everybody just thought it was a nice deal that the system would put together something like that that really, the word to me was, would hold us to the candle to try and achieve results. So everything's positive.
Motion to adjourn.
We got a motion by Lou. Second by Randy. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign and carry it. Carry it.